Come on, Lumbra.
Mr. Gonzalez, are you ready?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I'll do a roll call.
Dr. Piercy, I will call, count you into this.
Okay.
Five, four, three, two, one. Go ahead, please.
Welcome, everybody, for our Special Board of Education meeting here on, let's see, this is October 27th, Wednesday at 3:00 PM. Could I have a call to order, please, for a roll call, please, Megan?
Yolanda Montoya-Cortova?
Here.
Peggy Mueller-Aragon?
Here.
Lorenzo Garcia?
Yeah.
Barbara Peterson? Candalaria Patterson? Elizabeth Armijo?
Here.
Dr. David Piercy?
Here. I'll go to item two, Public Health Order. Due to the changing nature of the public health condition in Burnell County, this meeting will be a combination meeting with board members and limited staff in attendance at the John Millaney Community Boardroom, and a live virtual meeting for presenters. Members of the public may participate by watching the live stream of all upcoming meetings by clicking on the Live Meeting Stream button on the main board page at www.aps.edu, or you may email input, comments, and questions to board members at board@aps.edu, or you may call board members at 505-880-3729. Go to item three, which is the adoption of the October 27th, 2021 Special Board of Education meeting agenda. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved. This is Lorenzo.
Thank you.
I'll second. This is Peggy.
Thank you, Peggy. Ms. Buchanan, could you have a roll call vote on the, on the motion, please?
Yolanda Montoya-Cortova?
She.
She stepped out.
She's.
Oh, thank you. Sorry. I see that. Peggy Mueller-Aragon?
Yes.
Lorenzo Garcia?
Yes.
Barbara Peterson?
Yes.
Candalaria Patterson?
Yes.
Elizabeth Armijo?
Yes.
Dr. David Piercy?
Yes. I'll go on to item four, Special Issues. A is consideration for approval of the budget adjustments to the existing grant budget for the following funds. Discussion action, Mahela Merrin, Senior Director of Grants Management. Mahela.
Uh, Dr. Piercy, this is Tammy Coleman. If I may interject just for a couple of minutes, please humor me. I would like to introduce you to our new Executive Budget, or Executive Director of Budget and Strategic Planning. I'd like to introduce Ms. Rosalinda Montoya. She has turned on her camera, and so you will be seeing more and more of her in the future as time goes by. And I just wanted to make sure that you knew exactly who she was. So, thank you for that, and Mahela, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, and welcome, Rosalinda. It's Rosalinda, is that it?
Rosalinda.
Rosalinda.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Welcome.
Go ahead, Merron.
Thank you. Mr. President, members of the board presenting for your consideration of approval, the October 2021 bar, uh, grant bar adjustments. I did not see anything out of the ordinary, and I stand for questions.
Thank you. Board member questions at all? Board member, you have a question?
Yes. So can you tell me on, um, the state legislative appropriations? Where would we find that list, the list of projects? Because it just says it's district-wide.
Um, Mr. President, members of the board, the list of the capital appropriations, uh, it can be found on the Board of Finances website, and we can also provide you with, uh, with a list by year of the active projects that we have undergoing right now.
Okay, thank you. Um, and then on the K, K5 plus pilot transformation plan? So, is this the same as the K5 plus as always? This isn't a different, it isn't anything different, correct?
Board Member Mueller-Aragon, I will defer this question to, um, to Mrs. Von Garcia.
So this is the pilot program that several of our schools have, um, are participating in this year. But yes, the, um, parameters are the same that we have done with our transformational model, where we are adding one and a half hours to their day, and, um, it's an extended calendar for principals by five workdays. They're, um, doing the genius hour with their students. Um, so it's the same, the same as the transformational model, and.
Okay. And so there are other schools besides these? These are just the ones that are part of this pilot?
Correct.
Okay. And then I looked at the use of funds, and when I was looking at the bar page, I only saw salary and benefits. I didn't see anything in there for, for, you know, it says PD on here and other contract services, and I didn't see any of that on here. Is there a reason that it's listed under use of funds, but then when I looked at the bar, I didn't see any of those listed?
Um, Board Member Mueller-Aragon, um, it, it's, it is my, uh, my error. Uh, the funding provided by the state for this particular pilot unfortunately covers limited initiatives, which are salaries and benefits. Uh, but the transformational model itself, uh, that the, the district is supporting, um, covers, uh, additional implementations like genius hours, uh, the genius hour and, um, national board certification for, for the state that schools. I apologize.
Okay, so then my question is, under the use of funds, should, should those still be included then?
Not out of this funding.
Okay, so then we'll just, that will just be corrected?
Yes.
Okay. And then on, um, the out-of-school time, this is just for all community schools. It's not any other schools that are going to receive this out-of-school time? I don't know who would be able to answer that question.
Uh, Dr. Christine Muir can probably be the best person to answer this question.
Thank you. Um, President Piercy, um, Board Member Mueller-Aragon, no, this is for, it's not just for community schools. Um, other schools actually get, and it's, it's typically, they put in a request for out-of-school time programming, so it's not, you don't have to be a community school to get this funding.
Okay, good. I, I was hoping that was the case. It just threw me off with the out-of-school time community school initiative, so I was just assuming.
Part of the same package of funding that we get from the city, but other schools can get this funding too.
Okay. And then, um, so some of the contract services that are listed, you know, on here are just different things, different organizations that may do things for the out-of-school time. Is that what the other contract services would be?
Um, yes, ma'am. The, oh, it would be the school saying, we want to contract with this provider to provide an out-of-school time program at our school.
Okay. And then on the air quality ESSER funds, um, and it said it was to provide air quality, and it says district-wide, but it's not that much money? So, what schools, are it going to be the neediest schools that receive this money? Is that how that's going to work?
Uh, Board Member Mueller-Aragon, uh, the, this funding is, is being, um, allocated based on, um, based on availability and application. Uh, it is my understanding that this particular funding stream will be, um, will be used to address, um, air quality through, uh, maintenance on, um, windows and, um, outside connections to the, of, of the classrooms, uh, to ensure a, uh, a proper ventilation. We are bringing the second round of this air quality to you, and we have in the works the application for the third round of this particular fund.
Okay. So I'm just, the reason I'm just concerned, I just wanted to, I was hoping it would be at the schools that needed this the most, but if it's just based, based on availability and app, application, we can't guarantee that the neediest schools applied then, correct?
Board Member Mueller-Aragon, uh, our, um, maintenance and operations, uh, is handling the application for this. So I, I am certain that they, uh, they are making sure to prioritize the, the neediest schools first.
Okay, that's, that's good. And then on the job mentor, um, grant, um, it's talking about providing students with, um, guidance pertaining to job force futures, and so I'm assuming that's going to be a position that's, uh, that's just going to be receiving a stipend. It's already a funded position. Will they just be receiving a stipend to help with the job mentorship? Is that correct?
Board Member Mueller-Aragon, yes, that is correct, and, and for further question, uh, for further details, I will defer the question also to Dr. Muir.
Um, yes, you're correct. It is current teachers that work, that, um, deliver that program, and they get a stipend.
Um, okay, that's, that's a good thing. Um, and then on the Johnson-O'Malley, um, okay, let's see. I think I got that one okay. I think I have that question answered. So on the Native American Language Grant, I, I mean, obviously, I'd want a whole lot more, because I think this is really important. But do we have the staff that is able to provide these, these services? And I would also like to know how many of our, um, maybe native students or native languages are, um, some of those students that are not being serviced? Because we may not have the staff, because I think it's very important that we keep those, those children, keep those languages.
Sure, it really is important, and, um, we are also working on, uh, developing that program. And so I would like to introduce, uh, our interim Senior Director, Phil Farson, and I think he is here.
Um, I am here. The host did stop my camera, however.
Okay.
President, uh, Piercy, and, uh, board members, uh, um, it's an honor to be here today. Uh, yes, this Native American Language Grant actually has been ongoing now for, um, I believe this is our fourth year with this grant. Uh, we do have the staff in place. Uh, it currently funds two Navajo language teachers and one Zuni language teacher. Uh, these, uh, um, teachers are, uh, placed currently, uh, the one Navajo teacher has, at two middle schools, McKinley and at Cleveland Middle Schools. He splits his day between those two schools. And, uh, uh, the other Navajo teacher splits her day between Jimmy Carter Middle School and Chaparral Elementary School. And the Zuni language teacher is currently serving students at, uh, Hodgins Elementary School, Janet Khan Elementary School, and Emerson, um, Elementary School, or, and I'm sorry, Chalow Elementary School. Uh, that, that's the extent of this grant. Uh, because of COVID, there were certain other activities that were covered by the initial grant that, um, were not addressed in previous grant years. And so what this is, is, um, a part of what's, uh, considered a no-cost extension. We were able to extend the, the duration of the grant, uh, for another year, so that we could continue to fund these teachers. Isn't quite enough money to cover their salaries for the entire year, so, uh, it does cover 70% of, um, their, their salaries, and the rest we're picking up through our, uh, formula grant, so as to continue these, this program throughout the school year.
Okay. And there, I'm, I'm just making this assumption that there are obviously some children that aren't receiving these services. Is that correct? Some of them?
Yes, because, um, there are between 400 and 500 Zuni, um, students in, um, APS, and there are about 3,3500 Navajo students in APS. And so, as you can see, just by doing simple math, uh, one teacher for Zuni and two teachers for Navajo is not going to cover that. Um, these students are throughout the district and not just at those schools that we, uh, talked about.
Well, hopefully, we can do something to remedy that, I hope. And then, maybe you can answer this as well. On the Johnson-O'Malley, or it might go to Ms. Merron, under use of funds, when I was looking at the bar, I saw, you just have written salary and bene, benefits under use of funds, but I also saw, when I was looking at the bar, other contract services and PD and student travel, but I didn't see this written here. So is that something that should be added also under the use of funds?
Uh, Board Member Mueller-Aragon, yes, uh, due to the timing on where, when we can, um, submit, uh, the documentation, uh, versus, uh, confirmation of access to the, um, additional 12 months on the expiring funds, um, they will be added as, uh, as an option to be spent.
Okay, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from board members at all?
This is Board Member Patterson. I just have a quick question, if I may, Dr. Piercy.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, with regard to our Navajo students, don't we have a large population in Tres Volcanes, um, that probably could use these services, um, or a, a teacher there? Uh, how did we, how did we make a decision on what schools to cover? Because I know that we have students from Pajalu coming in to Tres Volcanes. So can you talk a little bit about that?
So are you still there?
I am. Uh, Board Member, um, Mr. President, and Board Member Patterson, and the rest of the, um, Board of Members, uh, yes, uh, we, there is actually a Navajo teacher at Tres Volcanes, uh, but that particular teacher is, um, funded through, uh, language and cultural equity and not through our department, uh, but there is a teacher teaching Navajo at that school, and that teacher is strictly at that school. There's also.
Thank you so very much. I'm, I'm happy to hear that. Thank you.
Any other questions from board members?
This is Barbara. This is just a couple of quick things. One, I think it's a typographical error under the ABEC job mentor. 144,000 additional FTEs. I think it just needs to be moved over to the other column.
That would be awesome.
And then, just going back to the after-school time, um, in the city-county grant stuff, how much of that, how many of those positions are, um, taken directly by staff that we already have? And how, how many of those positions are other contracted folks?
So, um, I'll jump in for you, Mahela. We don't have that comp, but we can get it to you. And right now, um, we're just, um, finishing up on the applications, so we'll have a better count on who they, um, actually hire to run those programs, whether it's internal staff or it's, um, it's someone from the outside. It really depends on the program, so, um, that they want. Some staff can, I think most of our schools like to hire internal if they can, but if they don't have someone internal that can provide the program that they need, then they will contract that out.
Okay. I know a couple of schools, for instance, do partner with Boys and Girls Club, for instance. Can these funds be used for them, or is this a separate chunk of money that goes some other place?
Depends on the program, um, Board Member Peterson. If Boys and Girls Club is offering something other than the daycare program that they use, they could use this fund for that. But if it's the daycare, that comes from a different place.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from board members? Questions? Yeah, I'll entertain a motion for approval, please.
I move for approval.
Thank you. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Um, Megan, could I have a roll call vote, please?
Yes, just to be clear, was it Ms. Armijo that seconded the motion?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Yolanda Montoya-Cortova?
Yes.
Peggy Mueller-Aragon?
Yes.
Lorenzo Garcia?
Yes.
Barbara Peterson?
Yes.
Candalaria Patterson?
Yes.
Elizabeth Armijo?
Yes.
Dr. David Piercy?
Yes. I'll go on to item, uh, Special Issue 4B, which is consideration for approval of the Inter-function Transfers for Grant Budget for the month of September 2021. It's a discussion action. Mahela Merrin, uh, Senior Director of Grants Management, you have the floor again.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board presenting for your consideration of approval, the Grant Management Inter-function Transfers for the month of September 2021. Uh, you will notice, uh, different format that was, uh, driven by both accessibility needs and, um, the request to provide a little more, uh, in detail justifications. Um, other than that, I did not see anything out of the ordinary, and we stand for questions.
Thank you. Uh, I'll just go to the board. Any questions from the board members?
I just did. I know that you're, you're making this accessible, and I think that's, you know, that's a good thing. But it would still be helpful if, to me anyway, if you have this page that makes it accessible, that's great. But if you could still put it on right after, it's just easier to not have to look at that page as well. So if, I know that might be a little bit extra work, but if you could, I'd appreciate it. And then, the question that I have, can you just explain to me, the, um, on the first page, it has the Support Services Central Admin, and it has the 202,731. So, I mean, the movement that I saw was for, um, adminis, for, let's see, substitute services, so that people could attend, teachers would be able to attend PD? So is that what the 202,000 is referring to then? In central administration?
Uh, Board Member Mueller-Aragon, uh, yes, that seems to be linked to Title II, uh, Fund 24154, the budget adjustment to provide teachers with substitute coverage while receiving professional development.
Okay. I just wanted to just make sure that I was correct. Thank you.
Peggy, um, Member Mueller-Aragon, can you, can you repeat your first request?
Well, see, um, let's see, Member Armijo, we got this last page that has all of the funds, but what it used to be is they used to have it on this sheet that had all the numbers, and they would have it after, after each fund, it would give the justification. So now we have to look at the last page and then look back at this one.
Okay. Got it. Thank you.
So if we could have both, because I know they're trying to make this more accessible.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from, uh, board members? Comments?
I move for approval.
Thank you, Yolanda. And do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Peggy.
Thank you. Uh, I'll go to Megan for a roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Montoya-Cortova?
Yes.
Peggy Mueller-Aragon?
Yes.
Lorenzo Garcia?
Yes.
Barbara Peterson?
Yes.
Candalaria Patterson?
Yes.
Elizabeth Armijo?
Yes.
Dr. David Piercy?
Yes. I'll go to item 4D, which is the consideration for approval of fiscal year 2021 Inter-function Transfers for all non-categorical funds for September of 2021. Discussion action. And, uh, Julianne Hicks, Senior Director of Budget and Strategic Planning, you have the floor.
Thank you. Good afternoon, President Piercy, members of the board, uh, presenting for your consideration of approval are the September Inter-function Budget Transfers for Non-Categorical Funds. I didn't really see anything unusual this month, and I stand for questions.
Thank you. Uh, any board member questions, comments?
No, and I would just ask the same thing, to make sure to put the justification on, on the page.
Okay, any other comments, questions?
Um, Dr. Piercy, I just wanted to say that I think that we skipped item C.
Yes, we did.
I'm on item C right now, I think, aren't I? Oh, I'm.
Me. You're on C.
I just checked C off, okay? Um, yeah, okay, thank you. Uh, let's go back to item C. Um, and we'll come back to item D. Item C is the, uh, consideration for approval of intra-function transfers for Grant Budget for the month of September 2021, and that is Mahela Merron. I thought Mahela was going to be the next one, so. So Mahela, you're back on. Julianne, we'll, we'll get to you again.
No worries.
See.
Thank you.
You appreciate that direction.
We were looking at it, but.
I think I just checked that off and then went on.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mahela.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board presenting for your consideration of approval, the, uh, Grant Management Inter-function Transfers for the month of September 2021. Um, again, uh, thank you so much for your input on, on the format, and we will try to accommodate it. Um, other than that, I did not see anything of, out of the, uh, ordinary, and we stand for questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's what I was looking at, but.
We're all looking at it.
Everybody else is looking at something else, huh?
Yeah.
Any other comments, questions from board members on this?
This is Board Member Patterson.
Yes, Board Member Patterson.
Yes, I have a question, and this is just for clarification more than anything. I see that we have, um, the, uh, Our Lady of Assumption, it's taking, um, a, a budget from, uh, supplies and materials to asset. Could you tell me what that is? What i, what is that? Could you, what this is? And I know that there's a New Abundant Life, another church group, that we transferred, uh, supplies and materials to assets.
Um, Mr. President, members of the board, it is a federal, um, uh, regulation for us to accommodate, uh, allocations to our private schools, the, with, to the private schools affiliated with our district. Uh, as Title I is a federal grant, we are, um, allocating based on, uh, poverty rates to, and according to the regulation, to all the private schools affiliated with our district that are willing and want to apply for this type of funding. And we are providing, um, budgetary services to, um, to help them, uh, complete their purchases.
So you're moving supplies and materials to asset?
Board Member, um, Patterson, uh, it, I would have to pull, uh, to, to do the, uh, further research to clarify exactly what this call requires to purchase by moving this budget.
Thank you. Uh, it's not clear. I mean, it, I, I, I'm sorry, I, I, you know, when you look at this and it goes to assets, I'm looking at something else. So, thank you. If you could clarify, that would be helpful.
And just, just to follow up to that, that's just pass-through money, right? That's not money that would otherwise be accessible to us for some other use?
Uh, Board Member, uh, Peterson, that, that is correct. In, in order for us to comply with federal regulation, that those funding, uh, are automatically, uh, to be assigned as access to the private schools. Um, we cannot flow by regulation, the, the funding to them, because it's public funding, um, going, that would go to a private entity. But we are providing the purchasing budgetary needs and, um, and support through the district within the constraints of their allocation.
Okay, thank you. And then to, to kind of follow up on that, then, are there teachers or staff that work at those schools that are APS staff, though?
No.
No? Okay.
Yes.
Okay. Um, and I just have a question, just if you could help me. On page five, there's the moving from substitute services to substitute services, and the difference I see is on the function under Title, Title I. So can you tell me what the difference is? One is, you know, Function 1,000, and then the other one's Function 1,100. I know I can't remember all of these. I'm sure you've told me before.
Um, the, the last digit, uh, board, I apologize, uh, Board Member Mueller-Aragon, uh, the last digit of the function, uh, allows us to track how the funding is defined to be used. I, in this case, we are moving, uh, the funding from a budget allocation with, um, no, with a, with a general, uh, purpose under, uh, program that is defined as general education. So we are further, uh, defining how the funding can be used within the budget.
Thank you.
Any other comments, um, questions from board members?
I just have a quick comment, and it's just to thank you really, in reference to the justifications that you've provided. I just thank you again. They're great. justifications that you've provided. I just thank you again. They're great.
Great. Do I have a motion for approval on items 4C then?
I move. This is Barbara.
Thank you, Barbara. And could I have a second?
A second. This is Lorenzo.
Thank you, Lorenzo. I'll go to Megan for a roll call vote on 4C.
Yolanda Montoya-Cortova?
Yes.
Peggy Miller Aragon?
Yes.
Lorenzo Garcia?
Yes.
Barbara Peterson?
Yes.
Candelaria Patterson?
Yes.
Elizabeth Armijo?
Yes.
Dr. David Piercy?
Yes, and now I'll go to item 4D, which is consideration for approval of fiscal year 2021 inter-function transfers for all non-categorical funds for September of 2021. And Juliana Hicks, you were Senior Director of Budget and Strategic Planning and explaining this, maybe we were close to done, but I'll let you go ahead and try again.
Thank you, President Piercy, members of the board presenting for your consideration of approval are the September 2021 inter-function budget transfers for non-categorical funds. I didn't see anything unusual this month and I stand for questions.
Great. Any questions from board members?
Hi, Dr. Piercy. I did. So I just at Navajo, it said that they converted the 0.5 at-risk principle to several different things. So I just wondered who decided to who decided to do that, to move it to the EAs and teacher stipends, et cetera, instead of having the at-risk principle?
President Piercy, members of the board, that would be the principle of Navajo.
Okay, well, I hope that's hope that's working well. And then I saw the also converting at Helen Cordiero, the converting that risk principle stipend to at-risk instructional supplies. So this is like two schools that are converting their at-risk principle. How many schools still have at-risk principles and why does it seem to not be working or something that they don't want anymore? I'm just curious because, I don't know, kind of working with at-risk students is, I think, is important. So just wondering.
President Piercy, members of the board, I'm not sure I have an answer as to how many schools have at-risk principals or assistant principals. I just know that when we allocate at-risk budget to the schools, those funds are at 100% the discretion of the principal. And so if they are, you know, making these decisions to move money around, we trust them to have the best interest of their students in mind. And this year is a little bit different than any other year, any other year, as you know, because the kids have come back and they've been away from the classroom for a year, year and a half. And I think the principals are challenged this year and are are doing the best they can to meet the needs of the students.
Yeah, I mean, that's just why I'm concerned, because I know this year is just a really different year. And I know that a lot of children are coming back with, you know, different kinds of different kinds of needs. So you would just think that we would need those at-risk principals. And I'm just thinking this one at Helen Cordiero was converting an at-risk principal stipend. So that means that principal is not getting the stipend, though they're working with the same group of students. So I I'm I'm just wondering about that. And then when it comes to at Highland, the rental equipment, what kinds of what kinds of things are those like what rental of what kind of equipment for, is that like for sports, for dances? What is that about? I'm assuming that's what it's about.
President Piercy, members of the board, let me take a look at that. Transfer funds cost of rental equipment for campus events. Off the top of my head, I don't know the answer, but I am more than happy to check back with Highland and get that answer for you.
Thank you so much.
Sure.
Let me just clarify just a little bit. As I understand it, when we say an at-risk principal stipend, we're not saying we have an at-risk at-risk principal. We're saying we have a stipend that's given to a principal for at-risk use. Therefore, the principal can use that for any kind of at-risk function that they need. It's not an at-risk principle that we have there. It's a fund that's given to a principal for at-risk use. And so I want to make it clear that it's, we're not getting rid of an at-risk principal here. We're using that at-risk money in the way the principal wants to use it. So I want to make sure that's clear.
Thank you. That was way more eloquent than what I said.
And Dr. Piercy, if I may add to that, so the at-risk funds that the schools are allocated are what were what have been previously known as the discretionary funds?
Right.
It's really the same type of funds. It's just that they are, they actually are the at-risk funds as appropriated by the by the state, basically.
Right.
Yeah, it's just the funding.
Than we really have had, particularly, it's maybe a little language difference, but.
Yes.
I'll chime in a little bit just from the practical point of view. Hopefully, it's also a decision that's being made collaboratively with the Instructional Council and the staff where they where they really say that, you know, for whatever reason, they're not benefiting students in the way they want to with the in one one pot, but find if they use the EA and had some other materials. I mean, hopefully, it's really and truly a school-based decision that's based on real, specific, both accessibility to staff and needs of student.
Right. And 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 what they're really doing is they have this money that's given to the principal. Principal allocates it into particular pots or whatever. And so when you say, for example, convert at-risk principal stipend to at-risk instructional supplies, they're just taking that money from basically one assigned pot to another pot. And they're not, they're using it in accordance with whether the principal and probably the instructional council or whatever that school needs. So I think it's just straightforward. It just may be a little bit of language clarification. So we can understand what we're doing. Any other comments? Okay, thank you, board member Patterson.
Yolanda.
Thank you, Yolanda. And so I'll go to a roll call vote for item 4D.
Yolanda Montoya-Cortova?
Yes.
Peggy Miller Aragon?
Yes.
Lorenzo Garcia?
Yes.
Barbara Peterson?
Yes.
Candelaria Patterson?
Yes.
Elizabeth Armijo?
Yes.
Dr. David Piercy?
Yes, I'll go to item Special Issue 4E, which is consideration for approval of fiscal year 2021 intra-function transfers for all non-categorical funds for September of 2021. It's a discussion action. And of course, anybody listening, there are these little combinations of things. So you may think we're doing the same thing again and again, but we're really not. So just make sure that everybody understands it. It's a little bit of a lingo thing here. Anyway, Juliana Hicks, Senior Director of Budget and Strategic Planning, Juliana, you have the floor.
Thank you, President Piercy, members of the board presenting for your consideration of approval are the September 2021 intra-function budget transfers for non-categorical funds. And again, I didn't see anything unusual and I stand for questions.
Thank you. Any questions for board members?
I just had, can you just tell me what, and I'm sure you've told me before, what is on page 18 of School Compliance Account? So I saw the FTE there, 23.40. So can you just tell me what that is?
Yes, ma'am, President Piercy, members of the board. School compliance accounts is the bucket of money where we set aside money for complying with the New Mexico State statute around class size compliance.
Okay, so about class size, okay. And that would just be something I, Scott, that I would just like to to know soon is the number of teachers that were at, you know, at my schools in like night in the school year 1920, 2021, and 2122, along with the enrollment for each of those years. So I'd appreciate getting that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions from board members? Okay, do I have a motion for approval?
I'll move for approval.
Thank you. And do I ask Peggy? And do I have a second, please?
Second, this is Lorenzo.
Thank you, Lorenzo. So I'll go to Megan for a roll call on item 4E, please.
Yolanda Montoya-Cortova?
Yes.
Peggy Mueller Aragon?
Yes.
Lorenzo Garcia?
Yes.
Barbara Peterson?
Yes.
Candelaria Patterson?
Yes.
Elizabeth Armijo?
Yes.
Dr. David Piercy?
Yes, I'll go to item 4F. Consideration for approval of statement of equipment taken out of service July 1st to the 31st, 2021. It's discussion action. And Ron Sandoval, Senior Director of Capital Fiscal Services. Ron, you have the floor.
Thank you, Dr. Piercy. Good afternoon. Members of the board, yes, before you, sorry, I have the wrong page. Before you is the statement of equipment to be sold at public auction and online sales in for the month of July 2021 in the amount of $2,250,000. I know you've got questions, so I'm going to go ahead and try to address it. And then if I don't make it clear, please ask for further clarification. Allow me to give you a little information. We keep a 12-month rolling average of all the equipment taken out of service in order to address something like this that might happen. In the last 12 months, we have averaged $523,000 a month that we have submitted to you for your consideration and then subsequently approved. The reason this now this number is much higher than that is twofold. No action items were presented to the board in the months of May or September. And historically, that's that's because at the end of the fiscal year schools are not in 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 they're not open, so they don't have anything to salvage. And then that builds up to the following month, so on and so forth. But the bigger picture of this, the reason why it's it's so much higher is included in this amount of 2.2 million are 2,100 computers that are from five to 15 years old. If you recall, during the last board meeting, this question came up about old computers. And it's because schools have held on to old computers forever. They haven't submitted them to salvage. But now that we're going one-on-one, one-to-one, excuse me, they are now realizing that they have no place to keep the old ones. So they have submitted them to salvage, and this is a result of all that catch-up. With that, I stand for questions.
Thank you, Ron. That was a good explanation. Probably gave a little bit of a question, but board members, questions from any board members?
Thank you, Mr. Sandoval, because you answered my question from from before. I was going to go through and read all the schools and how many computers, you know, were all, well, they were older than that were at least 11 years old. And there are some that are, you know, heavens, I don't know how they still work. But I remember when I was teaching and we would just put something in a room and it would just stay there. So thank you so much for that explanation. I appreciate it. I do have a question, and I don't know if you can answer that, but I was looking, can you tell me what the life of a Promethean board is?
The the useful life that we that we use for depreciation purposes is five years.
Okay.
All other computers, laptops, iPads have a useful and useful life of three years.
Right. Thank you so much.
You're quite welcome.
Thanks, Ron.
I move for approval.
Thank you. Do you have a second? Do you have any other comments and questions?
Just one observation. I think it's pretty astounding that in all of these hundreds of items, there were only four that are damaged and removed because they have with any life left on them. And everything else was zero. So I think that's pretty astounding.
Thank you, Mr. Sandoval. You do such an outstanding job and thank you for your explanation.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Go to Megan for a roll call vote, please. On item 4.
I don't know if Megan had to step away. Let me check. She might not be back, so let me do it. Peggy Mueller Aragon?
Yes.
Barbara Peterson?
Yes.
Candelaria Patterson?
Yes.
Elizabeth Armijo?
Yes.
Lorenzo Garcia?
Yes.
Yolanda Montoya-Cortova?
Yes.
And Dr. David Piercy?
Yes, and I logged the different different order. That was good. Kept this kept this alive here, you know what I mean? Wait a minute, my 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 voice is up now. Thank you, Brenda. Appreciate that. I go on to item Special Issue 4G now, which is consideration for approval to purchase two refrigerated trucks for APS Food and Nutrition Services from Roberts Truck Center. It's a discussion action. And Renette Apadoc, Executive Director of Procurement. Renette, you have the floor.
Yes, President Piercy, members of the board. The action memo for consideration is the approval to purchase two trucks for APS Food and Nutrition. These are two 2023 internationals. And the cost is 139,76488 per truck. And it's a one-time purchase and we will be using federal funds.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
I just have one question. Is this a replacement or is these new purchases?
Um, let's see, I see someone from Food and Nutrition. Ms. Gabriella, Dr. Blakely, do you know if this is a replacement or new trucks? If she's on.
It's federal funding. It looks like they're new.
These are new trucks. There's no doubt about that.
The addition.
The question of whether they're replacing a truck is a question, but I would assume that they're not replacing a truck, my guess is.
We had any refrigerated trucks. Okay.
Yeah. It's a good question, though.
Very good question.
How many of these do we really need? If these aren't replacing anything, like how many, if you could just find that out, it's not necessary right now. But if you could find out, how many could food and nutrition really, really use?
Okay, I'm I'll follow up for you. Thank you. Okay.
Thanks, and I appreciate all the specs and the picture, holy clay. I'm not sure that's really a picture of the real truck, but but it's it's a nice, nice truck. Just for those of us who don't know what a truck looks like. Thank you very much. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is that correct? I'll go to Megan or Brenda, whoever's here for a roll call vote on on item 4G, please.
Thank you. I'm sorry, who was the second?
Patterson.
Thank you very much. Yolanda Montoya-Cortova?
Yes.
Peggy Mueller Aragon?
Yes.
Lorenzo Garcia?
Yes.
Barbara Peterson?
Yes.
Candelaria Patterson?
Yes.
Elizabeth Armijo?
Yes.
Dr. David Piercy?
Yes, now I go to item 4H on the special issues, which is consideration for approval to purchase the renewal of support and maintenance for the N4 Lawson. It's a discussion action. Renette Apadoc, Executive Director of Procurement, you're on the floor. Thank you.
Um, thank you, President Piercy, board members. The next action memo for consideration is to to approve the purchase of the renewal of our continuing support and maintenance for N4 Lawson. N4 Lawson is our ERP system, our financial system. This approval is for three years and the cost is over 1.9 million for the three-year contract. I did provide a board report with your action memo to give you some history of this purchase. The vendor that we use is N4 and the product is Lawson. This actually was awarded through an RFP back in 2002. And the financials were implemented in 2003 and the HR and payroll in 2005. So you can see we've had it for some time. In 2016, there was an action memo that came before the board for a five-year contract. At that time, they also utilized Soul Source. And that contract has, you know, is expiring, so that's why we have this new one. I gave you some information on the scope of services. This Lawson runs our financial system and it is our system of record. As you can see, we purchased the Lawson Financial Suite, which has modules like general ledger, accounts payable, accounts receivable, procurement, HR. Our warehouses, our APS. um, our warehouses, our APS Materials Warehouse, our M and O Warehouse. And you can see on here, we have one thousand one oh one administrative users, and then over twelve thousand self-service users, and that's for reporting absences and such. We do integrate with other software such as MHC, and that prints our checks, our purchase orders, our W twos, our ten ninety-nines. We also integrate with Simple Sync, which sends out all the information to our benefit providers. Uh, we also, um, send information to our applicant tracking, our asset inventory, and we do have security reports. Um, we have over forty customized reports, twenty-eight custom screens, twelve custom tables. And as we looked for a proper procurement method, we went down the line. You know, it did not qualify as a small purchase because it is over ten thousand. Unfortunately, we couldn't get three quotes because it's over the fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine. I looked at every single crack and under every rock to see if I could find an existing contract with another government entity, and I could not identify one. I looked at all the cooperatives that we use, such as CES or GSA, couldn't find a contract. And we are currently working on a request for proposal. Unfortunately, those take anywhere from nine months to a year, um, to a war, because you see how complex it can be. So my last resort was Soul Source. And, um, in the report, I put some information of why I had to utilize this procurement method. Also, I put a little chart in there to show you that this isn't something that procurement uses, uh, frequently. Back in two thousand eighteen, nineteen, we had sixty-nine Soul Source. Um, we relooked at everything that we do, and in two thousand nineteen, twenty, we had two. Uh, last year, we had zero. My staff worked very, very hard. And then unfortunately, this year, this is going to be our sole source for this year. I also put in a purchasing plan on the RFP for, um, the ERP system, and this is something we've been working on. It gives you an overview, a mission statement, our goals, and a timeline. And again, this is probably going to take us probably till twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five to complete. So a lot of information there for you. And I stand for questions.
Very nice, Renette. Uh, I think this is well, something I haven't seen before, let's put it that way. Uh, and I think it's a great, great idea, a very good approach to letting us know and letting the public know exactly what we're doing relative to the contracts, how we're really working it, and in particular, trying to really work as best we can to go away from Soul Source. I think that's a really great idea. It doesn't mean that if you don't do an RFP, you may not pick the same, the same uh, company again. That's obviously something you could do, but at least you'd have an RFP. And so, uh, very good. I greatly appreciate this information. I think it's a, it's a, it's a great way to help us understand just a little bit better about what's going on here. So thank you very much. Really great. Appreciate that. I'll open it up for board member comments or questions or any thoughts?
It's Peggy. I just want, I just want to tell, tell you thank you so much, Ms. Apadaka, to go from sixty-nine down to just one for this year is just shows what amazing job you are doing, and I just thank you from the bottom of my heart. Because I know Soul Source is not something that I'm fond of, and I think most of us are not fond of it, so just to have one is pretty amazing. So thank you so much. Thank you so much for that. And obviously, this is, you know, it does run our financial system, so it's something that's been working for almost two decades, and it seems like there has been no reason to, to want to change it. So if it's working, I'm glad. Thank you again.
Other comments or questions?
I just have one quick question. This is Yolanda Montoya Cordova. So is the budget neutral on this in terms of what we're going to be renewing for? Or is it slight increase?
Um, um, board member, there, there is a slight increase. I believe it was three percent.
Okay.
And then, um, it goes up maybe like one and a half percent the following years.
That's nominal. Thank you. Great work, too. I agree. I really appreciate the explanation on this and, you know, the work that's coming ahead, because it is a big system. So that's, that's really critical. Thank you so much.
Any other comment, board member, Garcia?
Thank you. Um, I seem to recall there was some controversy at some point around Lawson, and it sounds to me like from what you've said, that, uh, the bugs have been worked out in terms of this system. Am I, uh, I'm just curious, my offer, is it? Um, board member, um, yes, board members, I would say that, yes, there, there was some bugs with Lawson. I've been involved for three years, uh, running business systems, and I'm, I'm very proud of the work that we have done. Um, my goal for this system is for it just to work. Just like when you go and use like your online banking, or you go to Amazon, or you go to any other software, that you don't even think about it because everything works the way it's supposed to work. That is my goal for that department, and that is something that all the employees have been working towards. So it sounds like you're saying yes. All right, thank you.
Yeah, I think, I think again, when you look at all the various functions that are here and how they have to really integrate and, and be seamless in terms of how they work, it's extremely complex. And so to get that to really work, and it wouldn't be unexpected to have a system, if you develop this, that it wouldn't have some bugs in it. I mean, that, it's, it's a very complex system. But, uh, I, I like your comment. It's just something that works. Yeah, that's what we all want, right? Something that works. You know, that's a nice way to summarize it. Thank you, Renette. Any other comments from board members?
Just thank you for the explanation and the work, and I, you know, I think it helps us too in talking to the community about just what a massive system this is with so many moving parts, and it's and what it takes to keep it all working is really phenomenal. So thank you for the work that you're doing.
Great. So do we have a motion, please?
I'll move for approval.
Thank you. And do we have a second?
Second, Yolanda.
Yolanda, thank you, Peggy and Yolanda. I will go to Megan for a roll call vote, please, on item four H.
Yolanda Montoya Cordova?
Yes.
Peggy Mueller Argon?
Yes.
Lorenzo Garcia?
Yes.
Barbara Peterson?
Yes.
Candela Ria Patterson?
Yes.
Elizabeth Armijo?
Yes.
Dr. David Piercy?
Yes, I'll go to item, uh, four I, uh, which is consideration approval of the request for proposal twenty-two day zero two three RRR to bituminous paving and related work materials. It's a discussion action. Renette Apadaka, Executive Director of Procurement, Renette.
Yes, President Piercy, members of the board. The next action memo for consideration is approval of RFP twenty-two dash zero two three paving and related services. Um, the evaluation committee recommends award to the top three proposals. This contract will not exceed three years. Operational and capital funds are used, and the estimated spend is about two million each year. And I stand for questions.
A little bit of an extra period in that two million.
Yeah, that's what I was seeing.
I want to put a comma there, but I got it correct. Okay, thank you.
So I am, I had to look up the definition for bituminous.
Bituminous.
Right. And, uh,
It's bituminous.
How do you say it?
It's called bituminous.
So the definition was, was, it was worse. So it was materials are dark brown or black, semi-solid or liquid, thermoplastic mixtures of hydrocarbons derived from natural synthetic process in which hydrocarbon mixtures have lost their volatile components, leaving a denser residue. I was like, oh my goodness.
It's, it's the scientific approach to having creating better paving materials.
Okay.
Dr. Piercy, I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Okay, so Ms. Ms. Apadaka, when I look at this, it's, it's, um, I need clarification because bituminous is on here. What is their relationship with those contractors that we're looking at that have requested the R, with the RFP? Um, you know, it, it, it sounds like they are making the request for the RFP. I mean, maybe I didn't read this right.
Who is bituminous?
By two minutes, yeah, by two minutes.
Bituminous is, is the quality, is the characteristic of the paving material.
No, I know what that is. I know it's, that's what you use on the freeways or the roadways. But what I'm, what I'm talking about is what, why are they on here and what do they have to do with those uh, with the RFPs, TLC, AUI, and those folks? Why is this?
Board member Patterson, President Piercy, board members. Um, those are the awarded vendors that the evaluation committee recommends, and this was done on behalf of maintenance and operations and facilities design and construction. And of what I understand, the primary use is for paving of parking lots, in school parking lots.
Right. Okay, and so by two minutes is who?
But it's not a who, it's, it's a what.
That's the type of material that we're going to use, yeah, that we're going to use on the road.
Right.
I got it. I got confused.
The member Patterson was just, she was just thinking that that was the name of the company.
Yeah, I did.
That's how it's, that's how it sounds.
It's like it's part of the name.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should, yeah, thank you.
It was that whole set of things that, that Elizabeth actually read.
What she described.
Yeah.
Thank you.
It was great to look it up and still be confused.
Yeah.
I move for approval if we don't have one.
Okay. Yolanda moved for approval. Do we have a second on that? Okay, the board member Patterson's a second. Any other comments on this? Okay, uh, we'll go to a roll call vote, please, on item, uh, four I. Uh, Megan, please.
Yolanda Montoya Cordova?
Yes.
Peggy Mueller Argon?
Yes.
Lorenzo Garcia?
Yep.
Barbara Peterson?
Yes.
Candela Ria Patterson?
A two minutes, yes.
Elizabeth Armijo?
Yes.
Dr. David Piercy?
Yes, uh, go to item, uh, special issue four J, consideration for approval of the request for proposal twenty-two day zero two two RRR Arborist Services on Call. Uh, it's a discussion action. Renette Apadaka, Executive Director of Procurement.
Yes, thank you, President Piercy, board members. The next action memo for consideration is the RFP for on-call Arborist Services. Um, we did get one qualified proposal, and this came from Baca's Tree Service, and, um, I was very happy to see that they are locally owned and have been in operation for more than thirty-five years. So it is very, um, nice to support a local vendor. This will be a three-year contract, and the estimated spend is approximately two hundred and fifty thousand a year. And I stand for questions.
Thank you, and, uh, I, I guess I'll never get my trees trimmed again. Because if they're busy doing all the hard work, I'll never, I'll never get them. I can't hardly get Baca trees anyway, you know, they're, they're so busy doing stuff.
Very busy.
They're very busy.
I do move for approval. They're awesome.
Thank you. They are awesome, yeah. I've got a motion for approval from Peggy. Do I have a second?
I'll second. This is Barbara.
Thank you. Do I have any comments or questions? They really do great work. I, I am impressed with their, their service. Okay, I'll go to, uh, Megan for a roll call vote, please, on item, uh, uh, four J.
Yolanda Montoya Cordova?
Yes.
Peggy Mueller Argon?
Yes.
Lorenzo Garcia?
Yes.
Barbara Peterson?
Yes.
Candela Ria Patterson? Elizabeth Armijo?
Yes.
Dr. David Piercy?
Yes, I go to item four K, which is consideration for approval of the purchase of FY twenty-one to twenty-five Medicaid billing contract from the Cooperative Educational Services. It's a discussion action. Renette Apadaka, Executive Director of Procurement. Renette, you have the floor again.
Yes, President Piercy, board members. The next action memo for approval is the purchase of, um, medical billing service contract. Um, the contract is through Civic Solutions Group utilizing a, um, software called Max Capture, which facilitates in collecting, tracking, approving, and submitting for billing for Medicaid reimbursement. We do utilize a cooperative education service contract as the procurement method, and it is estimated that the district will spend three hundred and forty thousand annually on these services. And we are asking approval for four years.
Thank you. Uh, any comments from board members, questions? Do you have a motion for approval?
I move, I move for approval.
Thank you, Board Member Patterson. And do I have a second?
I'll second.
Board member Armijo, uh, I'll go to Megan for a roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Montoya Cordova?
Yes.
Peggy Mueller Argon?
Yes.
Lorenzo Garcia?
Yes.
Barbara Peterson?
Yes.
Candela Ria Patterson?
Yes.
Elizabeth Armijo?
Yes.
Dr. David Piercy?
Yes, and I'll go to item, uh, four L, which is consideration for approval of cash disbursements for September of two thousand twenty-one's discussion action. Renette Apadaka, you have the floor again.
Yes, President Piercy, board members. This action memo is consideration of approval for the cash dispersments for September twenty twenty-one. PSAB requires that a summary of the vouchers be presented to the local school board for formal approval and entry into the minutes, and this meets the requirements.
Thank you. Uh, any comments from board members?
No, I'll move for approval.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second, this is Lorenzo.
Thank you, Lorenzo. So I had a motion from Peggy and a second from Lorenzo. Um, any other comments from board members? Okay, I'll go to Megan for a roll call vote, please.
Yolanda Montoya Cordova?
Yes.
Peggy Mueller Argon?
Yes.
Lorenzo Garcia?
Yep.
Barbara Peterson?
Yes.
Candela Ria Patterson?
Yes.
Elizabeth Armijo?
Yes.
Dr. David Piercy?
Yes. Um, and just, uh, before the final item here of upcoming board meetings, uh, I would like to say that it's, uh, it's great to be back.
To have you back.
In the home.
Yeah, we're happy.
And, uh, and it's great to have all of us here, you know? It's great to have all of our board members present, to be able to see you guys and to be able to, I don't know, just visit a little bit. It's, it's great to be here, and, uh, and again, as I say, I think this board, board's been a very good board, been a great board, and, uh, and so, uh, you know, we've gone through some, some pretty heavy time here in the last year and a half, two years, and I think we've held it together. So appreciate you guys a lot, and appreciate the board services here who have done a human job for keeping us in virtual, keeping us going, going, you know, in terms of all the things we have to do. Uh, and just amazing what you guys have done, Brenda, all of you guys, Brenda and Christie and, and, and everybody, so. Everybody's been wonderful. So thank you, guys, for everything you've been doing, and, uh,
Dr. Piercy?
Yes.
Were you adjourned?
Yes.
Super great. And we, I, I did give an answer to one question.
Okay.
In regarding the refrigerated trucks, the two are replacing two that are at this point non-reparable.
Okay.
And she has plenty of trucks. She needs drivers.
Okay.
Sigh.
Yeah, maybe we could, the four of us who are going away, we become truck drivers.
The CDL.
Or maybe school bus drivers. I don't know, you know?
Get your CDL and, you know.
Yeah.
So my curiosity was sparked. So there, there are three main types of coal bituminous. It produces the most gas. It's the most dangerous to mine because of the gas and explosions and such, but it's used for asphalt and that kind of thing. Anthracite's used for power production primarily, and metallurgical is what's used for making steel. So there are three kinds. Bituminous, bituminous. So there are three kinds, bituminous, bituminous, anthracite, and metallurgical. Or coking.
Science lessons today.
Don't know this language.
Okay, great. Well, thank you for the another science lesson. People say we don't don't appreciate science. That's not true. We 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 work on it every day.
I like it when people make me ask questions.
Okay, I'll go on to the last item, five, which is the announcement of upcoming board meetings, and the next Board of Education meeting will be held Wednesday, November 3, 2021, at 5:00 PM. The meeting link can access through the www.hpsedu website. And item B is the next Special Board of Education meeting will be held on Wednesday, November 10, 2021. It will not be at 3. It's actually at 5:00 PM, okay? So make a note of that, November 10, 2021, at 5:00 PM for the Special Board of Education meeting. And with that, guys, we are adjourned. Thank you for being here.
Board Member Mueller Aragon, if you can hang around for just a minute.